I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order and I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone to silence their cellphones and also to remind you that this is being taped for airing on DCTV and the Dartmouth High School YouTube channel. And with that, I'd just like to throw in like a roll call, please.
Dr. Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
Dr. Carol Carofodis?
Here.
Mrs. Kathleen Amorall?
Here.
Mr. John Noons?
Yeah.
Mr. Christopher Oliver?
Here.
Thank you. So, the first item on our agenda is we have allotted 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on any of the items that are on our agenda, I'd welcome you to step up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and let us know what you're thinking. And with that, I will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the regular session minutes of October 16th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose? All right, so that motion carries unanimously, so moving right along. It's a good thing you were right on time because we're moving right through that agenda. We have our student representative report from Madison Korea. Go right ahead.
All right, so we've had a very successful fall athletic season with the following highlights. The girls and boys soccer team, the volleyball team, the field hockey team, and the football team have all qualified for postseason play. The football team recently defeated Nauset with a score of 21 to 7 and will be traveling to Hopkinton this Friday to take on their top seeded team. Your support would mean a lot if you want to come out and support them. And the boys cross-country team has gone undefeated for the past two years in a row, recently with their OCL championship. More sports-related things, our Unified Basketball Team, which is led by Coach Bro, is off to a strong start. They earned a 2-1 record with victories over Dayton Rehoboth and Durfee High School last week. Our volleyball coach, Ms. Lassie, recently earned her 100th victory. Also, the Dartmouth High School band continues to impress with another first-place finish on Saturday in New Britain, Connecticut. Dartmouth earned the top score of the day and once again earned top honors in the state of Massachusetts. On October 19th, many members of the Dartmouth High School faculty participated in the first annual faculty football game versus New Bedford-Voc Tech. The event was organized by the DHS After-Prom Advisors, Ms. Lassie, Ms. Greve, and Ms. Kelly. It was a tremendous success and raised approximately $2,000 for the DHS After-Prom. So, I guess it was a lot of fun. I didn't have the opportunity to make it, but thank you to all who made it possible. The new Dartmouth High School English teacher, Mr. Lima, recently contributed to an article on the importance of student engagement that was published in the Penn GSE Perspectives on Urban Education. So, also, on October 22nd, DHS hosted an outstanding community resource and craft fair, which was very well-attended, thanks to CPAC for such a great event. There have been several community service and fundraising events that have taken place recently, efforts by DECA, the volleyball team, and field hockey teams to raise awareness of breast cancer as October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In addition, the National Honor Society is wrapping up their Shades for San Juan event tomorrow, so if you're available to donate any new or used prescription glasses, reading glasses, or sunglasses, please drop them off in the box located in the library or to the NHS advisor, Ms. Madsen. Some upcoming events at DHS include the Dartmouth Education Spelling Bee, that is this November 2nd. The end of Term 1 is coming up on Friday, November 3rd, and November 9th, we have the Superlative Dance. So, those are just a few things going on. Thank you.
That's a lot. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I took my son to the football game and I didn't go in, but I saw all of the cars in the parking lot as I tried to find him. It looked like it was a very popular event and it was a great, it's great to hear it raise so much money.
So, next on our agenda, any other comments or questions?
Fantastic.
Yeah, it was great. We have a presentation from Ms. Roy and our state assessment data.
Thank you. Going to try to stay here at the table so that I don't move away from the microphone like I've done in the past, but we'll give it a try. The device doesn't really have a laser pointer, so I'll try to describe it, but into you and some of the beginning charts will look familiar. And as you know, grades 3 through 8 has moved to, back to MCAS, but it's what they're calling the Next Generation MCAS. So, we'll see some new data on that. But the goal tonight is to give you an overview of our data. It's been a tight timeline for us in turning this around. The state, you know, just came out with our assessment data for our reports for reviewing them. They did give us student data earlier on in the form of a large spreadsheet, but they just released the data to us probably a week or so ago, so it's been a pretty tight turnaround. So, we're still looking at it. So, on the, you can, you have this on your handout too. So, a couple of things, just to review. State has now come up with the label Legacy, which means Legacy MCAS was the MCAS of the past, okay? And then the new updated computer base fully aligned to the new standards and expectation is called Next Generation MCAS. So, the assessments that are still in the older format, paper-based, in transitioning to a more rigorous and more aligned are the Grade 5 and 8 Science at the elementary and the high school for ELA Math and Science. So, those are still more traditional. They're starting to update, but those are still in progress. The Next Generation MCAS is available computer-based, grades 3 through 8. Schools were given the option to go fully 3 through 8, but the requirement is we had to do 4 and 8. Dartmouth chose to go fully computer-based 3 through 8 this past year. So, the requirement for the state is to be fully computerized in grades 3 through 10 by the spring of 2019, so we're still a couple of years away from that. We were held harmless this year for, this is our baseline year for 2017, so we felt it was a good time while we were adjusting and going computer-based to really begin to give the kids the experience of the online testing when we were held harmless and all of that. So, the current graduation requirement that they are proficient in ELA and math and that they pass the science is going through to the class of 2019. They haven't made any changes to that yet. And they're still looking at the reinstatement of the history as an option. So, a few graphs you're familiar with. So, what, we can do some longitudinal looks at those Grade 10 assessments because those are still in the same format and they haven't made any changes other than to increase some of the test items to make them a little more rigorous. So, what you see on the projector is the Grade 10 ELA, and you can see that they're holding pretty steady. Dartmouth is in the light green and the state is in the dark green. ELA for the state has been pretty flat for the last three years, holding at 91, and Dartmouth's gone from 95, 96, to 95. So, pretty steady in ELA. At some point, and we talked about this last year, I mean, there does become sort of a ceiling effect a little bit when you're bumping up toward the 100. But our goal is always to get all students proficient or advanced. And the breakdown of the categories, they still have the same four categories. In this case, since it's Grade 10, it is failing, Needs Improvement, Proficient, and Advanced. So, you can see they're very similar to last year. There's a few more advanced, a few less Needs Improvement, I mean, excuse me, proficient, but we generally add the top two categories together, so you can see they're pretty similar to what they were in the past. So, and as I've talked about before, we look at, you know, if, in comparison to the state and in comparison to last year's assessment, so what's in parentheses after the percentage in each category is whether that went up or down for Dartmouth or for the state last year, you know? So, you can see it's 53% advanced, that was a plus 2 for us. The state was at 47% advanced and that stayed the same. So, overall, in the advanced category, there's a difference of 6. Overall, Dartmouth at the bottom, you can see is 95%. We went down 1 for 96. The state stayed the same. We are still 4 above the state. The target for the growth, the middle category there, is 40 to 60 for typical. We're at 39 in ELA, so we would like that to improve into the typical category. The growth, again, the target is 40 to 60. The yellow part, all the way to the left, is the lower growth. The darker green, all the way to the right, is the higher growth. We are holding very similar to last year. We have a little bit more in that lighter green and about the same in the very dark. We would like to shrink that lower category even further. You can see it's, if you look at the shape, it's sort of making a U and it grew a little bit. We would like to shrink that back down. Like to have fewer students with lower growth and more students with higher growth. So, we have the same graphs for math. We're happy to report there's a small trending up, back up in the math. You can see there were, two years ago, we were at 85. We dipped down last year to 81. We're back up at 85. The state has held steady pretty much at 78 or 79. These are the top two categories together, which is the target, proficient or advanced. So, we're trending a little bit back up for the math, for Grade 10, in part due to some movement up from the Needs Improvement. You see the yellow portion in 2016 was wider at 14%. It's down to 10. We also have a few more in the proficient, the dark green, but if you look at the two together, you can see the top two categories are growing a little bit, which is what we want to see. And overall, for Dartmouth, the 85% is a plus 4 for us, and the state at 79 is a plus 1. The growth is coming back up. We still want it to reach the 40 to 60 category, but you remember it was very low a couple of years ago. Now, it's just in the low category, but we have done some work with increasing the time on learning for algebra, and this will be the second year. Those students are now in Grade 10 in geometry, so they will be taking the tests this year. And we are moving to a full-year schedule at the high school next year, so hopefully seeing improvement as students have those through the whole year. And what I mentioned earlier, if you see the yellow category for the math on the left, you can see that there was, we were up at about 48% in the low, so we're shrinking that down. Do you see how that's going down? So, that's nice to see. We would like to see the darker greens to become a little bit larger, which is the high and very high categories, but we are making movement in the right direction, which is nice to see, those efforts. Science for Grade 10 is also holding steady. We were around 77, 83, and 82 about three years ago, and now we're hovering around the 86, 84. The state is held steady pretty much across the board, so we've seen a little bit of movement in that. And you can see the movement, in this case, for science comes with, at the top end, you can see that advanced group, the blue, getting larger, a little bit larger. So, that's nice to see. And as far as the comparison to the state, overall, these are the, all three grades, so you can see in Grade 5, we went down by 12%. So, what we talked about a few years ago, when the new standards came out, that the 6, 7, and 8 jumped on board with the adjustments, and we said it would take a little while for the assessments to catch up, which they have. This is their third year with the middle school adjusting to that. Science in Grade 5 just did that last year, so we're going to see the same dip in science that we saw with the middle school. So, they fully aligned with the expectation while the testing is catching up. So, they're transitioning to the assessment change in Grade 5 that Grade 8 did a few years ago. So, overall, science is down 4 due in grade, to the adjustment in Grade 5, and for the state, it's down 1. We're still 4 above the state. And the high school, you can see, is 10% above the state. All right, so the new part. This will slow down a little bit. So, the Legacy MCAS, remember, had the four categories that we have at the high school, right? It had the Advanced, Proficient, Needs Improvement, and either Warning or Failing. So, the Next Generation assessments, which you'll hear more and more as the years go on, have four categories, and they caution us not to align them to the legacy because the expectation is now college and career-ready, next-grade readiness, and not just a base, baseline, basis skill assessment. So, the rigor of these has increased, not only in the expectation, but the platform has changed too, so we're going computer-based. And I talked a little bit about that last year. But, having said that, the top category is exceeding expectations. The second category is meeting expectations. The third category is partially meeting expectations for the next grade. In this case, the consideration for additional supports. And the last category is not meeting expectation, which again would come with the recommendation for substantial supports, okay? So, when the families get these reports, not only will it give them a rating in that, it will also tell them specifically where their child may be missing some grade-level skills. So, it's a much, much more parent-friendly report than it has been in the past. So, it will actually give the standard and specifically where that's being, might have a gap, which is nice. So, we're happy to have the MCAS back, in a sense, because now we start to get a lot of the old reports, which was part, was a little bit of adjustment for us in order to unpack where the breakdowns were happening. Unfortunately, they're not releasing all of the questions for us to take a look at specific question, and in some cases, because the assessment is on the computer, a lot of it may be drag-and-drop or matching, we don't get the nice reports that say, you know, if the right answer was C, a large majority were picking A, and then we can kind of unpack why they might be picking A, so we don't always have that. At the lower grades, they're releasing about five or six questions out of the whole test, which is not a lot. Grade 10 still gets all of their questions, which is nice for them to be able to unpack it. So, that's a little background on the test. So, we don't really have a lot to compare to because it's a reset year, it's a baseline, and they really don't want us comparing to previous years because they're really very different. So, what we can do is look at the state. That's one piece we can do. So, in Grade 3, on our assessment for ELA, we were at 51%, and I'm going to use meeting or exceeding expectations, okay, as the basis. So, the state was 47%, so that puts us at 4% above the state. For Grade 4, we were at 42%. The state was at 48%. That puts us 6 below the state, and I'll unpack that a little bit on the next slide. For Grade 5, 49%. State is at 49. We're equal. And as you go down, you can see 55, the state's at 51. We're above the state by 4. Grade 7, 39%. State is 50% below the state by 11, which again, I'll show you in a little bit. Grade 8, 39%. The state, 49%, 10 below. So, overall, for ELA, 45%. The state is 49. We are 4 below. So, again, so baseline reset and all computer-based. The state is saying they did make an adjustment for the platform. I don't know how much of that is negligible because we talked about this last year, when we go all computer-based, we will see a little dip in that. They did say they made an adjustment to the platform, but I still think there's a little piece of that, not only the platform, but the rigorous expectation. So, as we work with our staff on what that level of rigor is going to mean in that classroom and what students are going to have to be able to do for, to meet these expectations, we hope to see that these continue to move up like they have when we've done this in the past. So, a little bit, as we begin to unpack a little bit, the assessment includes what's called constructive response, where they actually type in an answer. The essay, which is a longer on-demand write, and selected response where they have to pick from choices that they're given, right? So, I tried to do this all in one chart. So, this is 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and the numbers that are different in the essay is the amount of points that the essay counts for, multiple essays in this case, compared to the overall assessment. So, as you move up in grades 5, 6, 7, and 8, the essays count for a greater portion of the test, in some cases almost half of the test. So, where we're not meeting some of the expectations are in the red. So, you can see the constructive response may be 5 below and 6 below the state, but that's only worth 3 points. Not that we don't want to look at that, but when an essay, the essay portion, the writing expectation is not meeting at least where the state is or beyond, that to me would flag an area to focus on. So, you can see across the board, the expectation for not only reading and responding to the text, which is a newer expectation, but also taking it on the computer and being able to write it without an edit and write in, at length in this category. So, one of the things we're unpacking today is on the computer-based assessment, the box that they're given to write in holds about 1,000 characters. The length allotted for the essay is about 2,500 categories. So, that box scrolls. So, if the kids don't understand that they can write beyond what they see in the box, they're not writing as much and they might be leaving themselves, limiting themselves just to that box. So, when we graph these, we can see a solid, almost solid line that a lot of our students are ending at 1,000. So, that tells us a little bit that they're not understanding how that box rolls. So, not necessarily that writing more gives you a higher score, but at least it gives them the option to write more too. So, that's a little bit of a window that I can, I can share a little bit about that writing piece and how we would work to unpack some of the data we're looking at. So, it's not only the level of rigor and the expectation and the responding, the reading and responding to the text, it's also a little bit of training on how that piece works. So, we're definitely going to target that as a category. So, for math, you can see that most of that is black, right? So, that means that we're either at or above the state. We have a small growth piece that's below the 40. It's very close for Grade 7 in math, but overall, we are above the state across the board. So, math doesn't have that long essay, right? They don't have, in some cases, two or three essays that ELA has, but we do have some standards. So, I gave you a little overview. There's a lot of data there, but there are categories and there are standards. So, we can see a little bit more red than the geometry area. Again, it doesn't make up a large portion of the test like you do when you move toward the bottom into the number systems and the fractions and the equations. You can see those are more on the darker end. We're not that large of a gap in math. So, there are some little pieces we can unpack on the questions that were given, right? So, we can take a look at the questions, see where students are breaking down. There are a couple of things we, you know, we looked at, like with parallel and perpendicular, which is a perennial favorite, where we tend to have a gap just because they're taught together, you know, and they're very close confusers. But overall, fairly good across the board for math. So, when we take a look, again, there's a caution, they shouldn't be compared to the previous year. We should expect, as we adapt to the rigorous increase in the platform, we should expect that they're going to go up. So, as I come back each year, hopefully we see that that improvement is happening. Again, they're not, they're not, it's not a basis skills assessment. It's really meant to signal readiness for the next grade level, and, you know, as we move up, college and career readiness skills. It is more rigorous. They reset the standards, and there are some grade levels that may be similar as far as where they were in the past. For the most part, we would probably see a little dip, if you've probably read about this a little bit in the paper. So, in some grades where they were 90% proficient, the state has reset that, and, you know, they're more leveling off at around 50, right? So, it's sort of a retraining and that whole reframing of what we're looking for, okay? There are really no accountability measures this year, except for at the high school. The only thing that they were really looking for to change any levels is if the participation level was not at 90%, and Dartmouth generally has very close to 100% participation. So, we remain the same. The high school remains at Level 2. The target there for the high school was 75, so you can see we're a little off in the aggregate. The high needs group took a dip this year, so the high school is unpacking that group. The special ed population is in there, the ELL population is in there, and the economically disadvantaged population is in there. So, we do have some of those very nice reports that allow us to break those up by how students in those categories perform, so we can unpack that. So, some of the things that schools and Tracy have been working on and many other administrators supported a lot of this work. So, our vertical teams for math, we're looking at the pathways that we've talked about that are in the strategic plan and best practices in the classroom, so where our schools or group of students performing very well, so we can, where we can look at, you know, what's working and what's not working for those. The writing vertical team is going to be unpacking, they have their common writing assignments, and they'll be calibrating the scoring. We do have, now that we have back to the new MCAS, we have those nice rubrics, we can unpack that. We have data on what parts of the writing they did well, whether it was the idea portion or the convention. We can see that students who are writing on the computer base, computer base, aren't necessarily doing their capitalization, you know, to begin a sentence, you know, they're used to the texting and all that, so they have to be reminded that all of that's still important. So, not only the writing in response to, you know, the text that they're reading, but also that, you know, all those grammatical things that they do when they do on paper, they still have to do on the computer, right? So, we still have horizontal teams. We have the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Teams, which work on the horizontal alignment of, they did a lot of work on science last year. The L3 team is a new team, which is the Level Literacy Leaders, which is going to be working on the writing piece. So, those are teachers, one teacher from each grade level, from each school, just like the CIA team. And we're continuing our PLCs, learning communities, and they're looking at a lot of data. They're updating their literacy resources in their classroom lessons with their model curriculum units and all of that. So, those are still ongoing, and we're continuing with the mapping of the units and updating of all the assessments. So, other things that are all in alignment are goals, you know, individual goals, team goals, school goals, strategic plan goals. Again, the refinement of our curriculum as we Again, the refinement of our curriculum as we start to meet that new rigorous component, the STEM pathways that you've heard about in the computer science, the biotechnology and the engineering, that's all ongoing. We continue to refine the work with PBIS and RTI. Again, when we look at interventions on where students are not meeting expectations, that becomes critical. And then the professional development in the inclusive classrooms and the SCL and the English language learner support and the technology integration, all support of all the work that we've talked about. So that's a brief overview of where we are in the reset year. If anybody has any questions. Again, we're just starting to unpack it all, so.
Questions? Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. First of all, thank you for a very thoughtful presentation. I think we're pretty, you know, steady at the high school. I would like to see a little bit more growth there with the growth percentiles. I think we've got a little bit of work to do. But, you know, overall, based on the fact that we can compare our, our MCAS data to last year, that I think we've got a little, we could do a little bit more with the, with the growth. I'd love to be able to see that go up. As far as our grades three through eight with the Next Gen MCAS, what are we doing to, because I also heard the fact of the, the text box for the essay, that a lot of school districts across the Commonwealth are having, I've heard that brought up a couple of times with my colleagues, that, you know, that that's been a common theme, that students didn't realize that they could, that that continued down. So that being said, what are we, what are we doing to prepare our students in grades three through eight a little more for the computer-based test now that this is all fully online? Because there's definitely a difference between writing on paper and sitting in front of a computer, especially when students are used to texting on their phones or on their iPads and on their devices, not so much a laptop. What are our plans to really, you know, bring the laptops or the Chromebooks with the students and really get them comfortable in front of them taking the test online?
Well, you know, we've increased the amount of technology we've had too. So the Chromebooks are doubling at the middle school and they're, I don't know that they're doubling at the elementary. There's definitely more of them there. We have those integration specialists. We've seen in our visits that they're being more integrated into the classrooms. But through the, through the coaching of the specialists and the PD that are available is one of our strands on how to better, not just to have technology used, but how to more effectively use it in, in the places that are appropriate and that add to and enhance the instruction rather than just, you know, using it for the technology's sake. So our staff are working with, with, with the teachers and the teachers are becoming more comfortable on integrating that. And I think the more we give students the opportunity also to do those cold writes right there on the computer, I think we're going to see them, you know, become more comfortable with that too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation. I appreciate it. I appreciate having all these papers.
I try to pick out the ones that, I try to pick the ones that tell a story, not just, I mean, they could just be, you know, just graphs.
Well, what happened was I tried to print it once, it didn't print. So of course I said, "Print it again," it didn't print. And today, all of a sudden, I got papers coming out everywhere. So it was a little bit of a problem. I think considering the fact that they have two new things happening at the same time with the MCAS, it certainly, I think, has affected the way that the students have scored. I think in the past, there are some areas here that really look like, that are concerning with the, at the high school with 33% of the students scoring in a lower area in math. But I, I really think that once you have an opportunity, as you said, to unpack everything, you will be able to do the item analysis, right? You'll be able to tell where they're making their mistakes.
We can see, we can see the item analysis, we just can't see all the items.
Okay.
The high school can. So the one you're looking at is 33%, that's growth. Because remember, they were like 95% proficient or advanced. So their achievement is high. The growth compares their expected movement compared to their previous two years. So grade 10 would be looking at their grade eight, well, not just their previous two years, but kids who scored like them. So if I was a 234 and then a 245, how did my cohort do?
I see.
So that 33 just says, "I didn't improve as much as my cohort," even though we're at 95 or 96%.
And it's difficult to do that because you've got two, you're looking at two different tests.
For grade 10, it's still paper-based, but yes, for grades three through eight.
Okay.
Grades three through eight, it is, I don't, I'm not quite sure how they do it.
Jump in on this because I had a question about the growth too. Is that, so it's a normal distribution then, right? If you're compared to other students, so half of the students half are above 50%, you know what I mean? If you're comparing to other students, right? It, it goes from zero to 100. Everyone can't be at a 60%. So in some ways, it's, I know we want to focus on growth, but it's a, some ways a poor measure of performance because if you're performing very high, right?
You can only grow so much.
Small movements can create large sort of variation in that normal distribution. Sorry, we're talking math.
So, yeah.
Right? It's a very truncated variance here around that normal curve when you're up at the high end.
So the normal curve is on, is for the state. So they don't just put Dartmouth on the, the distribution. So we could be, you know, a little bit more to the right or to the left compared to everybody across the state. But sometimes when you get toward the top, you can still be high-growing, but the, the band for that movement is very tight.
Take you down below, yes.
Whereas when you bottom, that fan for growth is going to be much larger because there's more, though the expectation might be that you're expected to grow, but sometimes just the movement of one at the top can move you up or down. And sometimes you can go down and still be higher-growing, which doesn't make sense. But if that cohort varied, came down a little bit.
Well, considering math doesn't make much sense to me anyway.
I still want to try to wrap my brain around this. I want to try to understand this. So let's say you have a very high-performing district, right? We're pretty high-performing. So small changes can bounce you very, one question wrong or right can bounce you pretty high or low on that growth percentile, right?
You mean a high-performing student?
There's small, there's smaller variation for the high-performing students to create growth, correct?
Yes. Then the cohort is narrower.
Right. For lower-performing students, there's much greater variation around that score that they've got because there's more room for them to go up and down.
Yes.
So if you're in a district with more low-performing students, is it harder or easier to achieve higher levels of growth? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's.
So back when this all came out, remember the higher achieving districts? You know, you were way up high and so that's how you were ranked. So when growth was brought in, it was really brought in to kind of equalize the playing field a little bit because now we could see whether you were moving. So I don't know the overall answer to that. I like to hope that you could.
Right. We want our students to grow, but I just, I'm, I'm, I remain unconvinced that growth is a good measure of performance because it's so dependent on not your absolute level of achievement, but how your peers are also achieving.
Peers like you.
Like you, right? And so I, I don't, we do want it to be higher, but I don't necessarily think we should obsess over it because we are performing well, which makes it difficult to achieve higher levels of growth.
So the components of that growth for the state, if you saw that yellow to light green, would be 20%, 20%, 20%, right? So that's the state on the growth, so not, and so we.
It's like a forced normal distribution. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Carafotis.
The other, the other issue I just wanted to ask about students that were not meeting expectations, how do the schools address that with their students? I mean, I would think most of, by third or fourth grade, most of the students have been identified whether or not they have any learning issues. But what if there are some kids that kind of drop through? Is there a way that we go through and look at each child? Each teacher or each principal knows the students that are failing and what?
So as you know, MCAS is not the only bench, only assessment we have. So we have other assessments that we use to universally screen them and progress monitor students. And there are groups of students that receive substantial interventions. What we want to make sure is we don't miss that, that group that's just above those students or that are receiving substantial support. The students that are maybe just making it in and unpacking that. So we do have some of those nice reports, again, where we can see where they fall to make sure they're not slipping through. But yes, we do have screenings and interventions available. And we're, we're lucky enough to be afforded interventionist and not all districts have those.
Very good. I thought so, but I just wanted to bring that up. Also, I agree, the new report is excellent. My grade three granddaughter came home with it today. Well, she's grade four now, but she was grade three. And it was so much easier to read and I think parents are going to appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Well, I mean, really easy to understand as you go through it. Very important to note that three, you know, you read in the paper, like you said, that, that three to eight, that reset year. And I just sort of, I was going to mention about that high needs population at the high school and just speaking to like the, I would anticipate that as we move forward with that full year schedule, that some of, unpacking this data and then being able to have that year to sort of work through some of those targeted areas, I would anticipate would reap some growth.
Remember, if I'm a student that's struggling in a semester schedule, that's so much more compacted. So we're, we're looking forward to that full year schedule. And also there's more opportunity within the new schedule that starts next year for academic support or learning support intervention that we haven't had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think everybody knows how I feel about the MCAS test. Not telling tales out of school, I don't think it. You have to have standard testing and I got it. But to sit here and kind of make this almost one of the benchmarks whether or not a student graduates, I think is wrong. But that being here or there, I do like the new setup for the explanations and things of that nature. What I'm a little disappointed in is not having all the questions available.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, you know, if you, do we know which ones they've given us yet? I mean, did they give us ones that everybody had an issue with or, or all the good ones? Or they have, they just haven't given them to us yet? They're just, they're just going to give us random?
Pretty much the first five.
Yeah. Yeah, so everybody's, everybody's fresh taking the, you know, you got the first five, everybody's kind of fresh. And when I say fresh, it's early in the testing cycle, so they're good at doing that. But I mean, I think we, unfortunately, it appears nowadays we have to teach to the test, which is wrong, in my opinion, type of deal. So to not have the, all the questions available, you know, doesn't help us help the students learn what they, to teach them what was wrong. And, you know, is it just the way it was taught overall? Or did everybody misunderstand the question, type of deal? So those are, those are my comments. I appreciate the, the show, the, the presentation was excellent. And, yeah, and I guess the, the box writing, and I didn't know anything about that, which is fine. But, you know, to all of a sudden get there and they, they stop is something I think everybody's going to learn from.
I'm hoping with the questions that, you know, once we're at this for a while, then they grow their database of questions, because they field test some every year, that they'll hopefully be able to release more and more because their bank of questions will be larger. But I have not heard that. That's just what I'm hoping for, you know?
Chair, I'd just like to comment on something because I have strong feelings about teaching to the test. I used to tell my teachers, "If we're doing a good job, we don't have to teach to the test." That we have to show children how to take a test. We have to make them aware of the best strategies to use. But I'd really have a difficult time getting a hold of the test and giving that test to kids all the time as a practice assignment so they can do well. I really think we have to really focus largely on the curriculum, the steps that you're taking here with your vertical and horizontal, mapping the curriculum. I believe good teaching, you'll get good test results. And I would really hope that we're not teaching to the test.
But there are some little pieces, like understanding that the text box goes beyond what they can see.
Well, that's exactly, the strategies that you need so they know how to take a test.
And understanding that they're not, it's not like they're texting, they still have to capitalize. Those little things that we can share.
But you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah. Teaching them to read the instructions though is a life skill that will teach them well no matter where they go, right? So that's not teaching the test, that's teaching to read the instructions.
I agree with Dr. Carafotis. I feel the same way.
Dr. Carafotis years ago said it real perfect one time at something that I was attending. And he says, "Everything I need to learn, I learned in kindergarten." Yeah, no.
And preschool. And preschool.
I'll, I'll just say, you know, I think that you see some chatter online and, and people were maybe expressing some disappointment because they didn't understand about the adjustment. But I also want to point out, you know, for a lot of these kids, particularly for our kids in the middle school, there's been a little bit of assessment whiplash, right? Like in standard whiplash, we're going from the MCAS and then to the PARC and then to the Next Generation MCAS. And I know they're the same and our teachers are feeling this too, right? That what, even if we wanted to teach to the test, what test are we teaching to? Because it changes every other year, it seems like. And that's been, I think, a real disservice to the students who have been going through this. I mean, I know the standards are very close, but the idea that there's, there, for, for two decades almost, there is consistency in the assessment and the standards. And that, that teaching is also about practice. We can get in a comfort zone, but we also gain experience and expertise when we teach and mastery. And we learn new ways to do things. And the fact that we're constantly having to adjust to different tests and different standards makes it really hard. And so I'm, you know, I'm really happy with the work that, that we've been doing to adjust to this. And I really hope, knock on wood, that the state finally sticks with an assessment system for a while so that we can, you know, do the real work of, you know, figuring out what we need to do, getting the questions, like learning how to do this, right? It's hard when, when you're trying to hit a moving target. I mean, which is what we've been doing for the past, you know, six, seven, eight years here. So I think, I think it's, it's great what everyone's doing and I'm looking forward, hopefully, to a period of stability in which we can, you know, the boat's not rocking underneath us all the time. Any other questions or comments?
Good, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Roy. All right, so next, we have on our consent agenda, request for permission for the DHS Coral Group to attend the Broadway shows and tour performance venues in New York City from May 25th through May 27th.
So move.
I second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Nunes and a second by Dr. Carafotis. I think we're supposed to ask Mr. Kingsland a question now since he's been here all night waiting just in case we ask a question. So if anybody would like to ask Mr. Kingsland a question about the trip to, you know, make it worth his while, you can feel free to do so.
I think I know the answer though. I was told never to ask a question you don't know the answer to. I noticed on the, on the paperwork that the parent, the students are paying more than the parents that are going. Is that because they're paying for it to go to the instructional?
Mr. Kingsland, can I ask you to come up to the microphone so our audience can hear your response? We're really going to make it worth your while. This trip out here tonight, we appreciate you coming.
So pretty much any of these trips where there's a student activity part of it, performance part, the kids are assessed more than the parents that are just going to watch them and stew it over them while this, this is going on. So that's the difference in, in the price is, is just the workshop thing. The workshop thing with the Hamilton people from that show is pretty expensive, so.
It's a wonderful opportunity.
It is, it is. And, and Mr. Rodriguez hasn't taken a group on a thing like this in quite a while. So it was, it was kind of like time. Good for the program, good for the kids.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think it's a wonder, a wonderful opportunity for our kids to experience it, particularly since we're so close. They will take advantage of that. Do we have any other questions or comments? Say thank you for coming to answer that question for us, Mr. Kingsland.
You've got another one though, too, right?
What?
You've got another one of these you're looking at too, right?
I have another one. No, I do not.
Oh, okay.
I only have one. Sorry.
Congratulations also, Mr. Kingsland.
Yes, thank you.
They're rolling along really good and we'll see what happens next couple of weeks. The real, the real competition is the last day.
Yes. Good luck.
When is the date on the other one you're speaking about, just so we're in timely?
November 11th.
Oh, yeah, right on November 11th on the Saturday.
Oh, no, that's, oh, no, nope, I thought that's.
No, 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 we already approved, we already approved the trip. We already approved that trip to nationals.
So you guys are.
that trip to nationals. So, you guys are all set.
Oh, I got that information today. I brought both packets.
All right, beautiful. That one's already good. Yes.
Wondering what else is coming.
Okay, okay. All right, so any further discussion on the motion? Harry, not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, so next, we are on, I thought I turned my sound off, sorry. I thought we, we're moving on to new business, the acceptance of a donation for the DeMello School. I know, Mr. Kyle's gonna tell us about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. We were pleased that Mrs. Poveo let us know that the DeMello School PTO is prepared to donate a sign, new sign for the school. So, I provided you there with a memo from Mrs. Poveo, as well as a quote and a draft of what the sign would look like. So, I think it would be a nice improvement. And in order to do that, we would require approval of the school committee.
That's it.
Enter a motion for the acceptance, accept the gift of the DeMello Parent Group and thank them.
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Karafotis, a second by Ms. Amaral. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
It's just adorable.
Right, it seems strange that we have to approve a donation. I mean, I guess there may be some circumstance where you might say no if it was questionable, but I don't think there's any question here. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so the motion carries unanimously, although I should note, Ms. Genthard, that Mr. Oliver has not been, has had to step out, so we'll put him as an abstention for the last two votes, please. All right, so, moving on, next, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Griffin's gonna give us an update on the strategic plan.
Yes, thank you. So, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of what we've done, some of the things that we have done with the strategic plan, and also how we've refined and updated to move forward. So, if you remember, our three strategic objectives, we're teaching and learning, these are the original folks that chaired the committees, access and equity and community engagement. And just as a quick reminder on what those were, our four initiatives under teaching and learning were, you've heard a lot about it, the curriculum mapping that we've been engaged in, the development of units of study, assessments, et cetera. That's an ongoing process. Creating a system of assessments, you just talked about MCAS, but once again, it's not our only assessment that we use. We are constantly trying to refine and work with our teachers about what really makes a good assessment and what gives us good information, not only for our RTI process, but just to inform basic daily practices. We also have, are been, we've been talking a lot about and working a lot about expanding our K through 12 STEM programs, our enrichment activities, et cetera. And of course, as we've been speaking a lot about also, the work on our math program, our vertical alignment on that, enhancing that entire program. So, under teaching and learning, I'm just gonna mention a few of the things, you have everything in your packet, that some of, under the initiatives, some of the updates, what we have done so far. And aside from the curriculum mapping with the Rubicon Atlas program, a lot has been going on with that, because we've had to provide our staff with a lot of PD, various content areas and departments, including, for example, this summer, a number of folks at the high school participated in that. It also includes a lot of professional development about, just basic things about what's an essential question, what's a formative assessment, those kinds of things. How do we develop units of study? We've had a lot of teams come together, especially across our elementary schools, to enhance that consistency across those schools. So, you've heard a lot about the CIA team. We now have the Level Literacy Reader Team, the L3 Team, and other kinds of teams that have been working very hard to develop various units. I think a couple of the very important things that we've done with the hiring of the additional technology staff at the middle school, we've been able to restructure kind of how instructional technology, students are learning about instructional technology, whether it's becoming embedded in their content areas, really working on what are the digital literacy standards that we have to address. So, our technology delivery has really shifted with the addition of those folks there, as well as, of course, the folks we already have had at DeMello Elementary School. So, a big emphasis on technology, not only the infrastructure, et cetera, but again, the embedding and the use of technology in the classroom. Very excited this year, as you know, we've established the partnership with Highlander Institute, so our work will be continuing with blended learning and personalized learning. Some, about the assessments we're working on, we had a lot of work happen with, of course, the state had come out a while ago with the DDMs, District Determined Measures, so we had to do some work with that, pre and post-assessments across our content areas. Now, we've switched that, because DDMs don't really count anymore. Talk about riding a boat that's always shifting under you, but we are using some of those as our common assessments, because we do want to be able to compare across classrooms, et cetera, and help our teachers find out where kids might be falling down or where our instruction might need to improve. Lots of professional development on a social emotional learning, as you know. And also, just to, one of the updates we've made this year, we had worked on, was our entire team across the elementary district, including an admin and our social workers, worked quite a bit up into this summer to develop and be able to implement a new child protection unit in all our elementary schools. Had a lot under teaching and learning, because that is what we do. Just as I said, this one, again, it picks up on the whole curriculum mapping and the technology. So, as you can see, as I just mentioned, the reorganization of the middle school tech staff and some of the courses that are happening throughout the district, the digital literacy, the computer science, engineering, tech integration, and of course, those folks that are working in our schools are able to provide innovation support for our other teachers in the content areas. With the math work that we've been doing, so one thing I wanted to highlight was, this past year, we piloted, we're, a couple of our classes at the high school, we offered some academic support and coaching for some of our struggling students. And also, as we've talked a lot about, we have had many meetings and we're continuing to do that between our middle and high school with our coach and lead teacher there, as well as the admin team, to work on what that math vertical alignment should look like. Some of the next steps I want to highlight for the first objective is, there's a lot up there, as you know, we'll continue the curriculum mapping, of course, but we're also going to be looking at, as I just said, really integrating some of the technology into the content areas, into our curriculum units that already are in existence. And of course, our engaging in the innovation pathway development at the high school. You know, we say it's at the high school, because the work, the specific pathways are being developed there in robotics engineering, computer science, and biotech. However, we always know that we have to continue to enhance what we do on the, in the early grades and our middle school, because that's where the foundation starts. Those are some of the things that we're working on in teaching and learning. Access and equity, as a reminder, we were looking at creating and ensuring that our technological structure was intact and really rigorous, because we believe that having real good access to technology gives all students optimum level of access to learning. And of course, expanding and enrichment, as we already talked about a lot, our social emotional and well-being of all of our students. So, some of the things we did this past year, let's see, we, one thing we did with the technology piece, was they've been doing a thorough assessment and evaluation of the inventory, the resources, as well as then determining some of the needs that we expect to have for the technology. And that included personnel, as we've seen. Other than that, one of the things we were pleased to be able to do is start on developing a really concise list of software applications. We find that throughout of our schools sometimes, especially even from classroom to classroom, there might be a variety of things being used, but what are those real important ones that we find are very useful and we would like to have consistent across the district? So, we've been looking at that. And one of the things that, as far as social emotional and really addressing the needs of all students, we were very pleased to be able to hire the Director of Counseling and Student Services at the high school, as you know, and add a counselor there, a student, my head just went out, social worker there at the high school as well, and to help with our transition planning, et cetera. And Ms. Townsend's been working really hard with the middle and high school all of last year to really create a program description that's really consistent and flows from, helps kids transition from our middle to high school. Those, those students that might be struggling with some social emotional issues, behavioral issues, that they just need some, another program to be able to get them on the right path. Some of the next steps in our access and equity, we will continue to align our digital learning standards using our Rubicon Atlas. Some of the other things that have been enacted and will be continuing, the monthly clinical services meetings, those have been very productive and again, creates consistency across schools, as well as networking and support. And I really liked this year, what Ms. Townsend's doing is she's really working with developing relationships in the schools, because she starts her day in one of the schools all the time. So, we, to continue our social emotional there, that really gives access to the teachers that need help, as well as what's happening in the programs. And our last objective was our community engagement objective, which of course, as we knew, was to increase communication with the community and parents, and also to be able to continue to outreach and engage our parents in our schools. So, some of the things here, once again, meetings have been going on. One of the things that the team, did I skip one? No, okay. The team that was on this was looking to do the website, the new website, as you know, will be coming out, and they've been exploring the creation of an app. And I'm not quite sure it's gonna work yet, I haven't downloaded anything, but that kind of thing. So, that will be that technology that's able to really enhance the communication that we have with the community. So, those were some of the big things that went on this year in that place, other than the school-based meetings, et cetera. And some of the things we did were also to host those community series that we had last year. We created COPE, came out of our Healthy Dartmouth Committee, and that's still going along. And we just feel really pleased about our increased social media presence with the Facebook page. All of our schools now are having Twitter accounts and everything's gonna be interrelating. And folks just really enjoy seeing their students on their, on the Facebook, et cetera, and finding out what's happening in the schools. So, next steps for community engagement, of course, we're all anxiously awaiting for the official rollout of the website. It's there, it's living. And you can see it, but we're, we haven't gotten rid of the old one yet, out with the old and with the new. As I said, the district app rollout. And one of the big things, of course, we're looking at is to, with the mass skills grants, to be able to expand our partnerships with industry partners, as well as really enhancing some of the articulation agreements we might have with the local community college. So, those are some of the big things that are happening, have happened. And as we said way back when we started this process, it's a living document. We've sat and gone over and really brainstormed all of the things that we think we've done throughout the year in accordance with this. And just will continue that work and little tweaks and enhancing along the way.
Great, thank you, Dr. Griffin.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna start at this end. Mr. Nunes, you can go first this time.
Thank you. Fantastic. I just want to know what everybody does in their spare time.
Yeah, I know.
Wow, it's nice to see there's a lot going on. And specifically, I'm impressed with, you know, the last couple with the community engagements and, you know, the website adjustment coming. And, you know, I know when that's gonna be out, the end of the year, so.
The end of the year, yeah.
That'll be good.
We have to, because the old one disappears, so.
Yeah.
Basically, the one.
Do we have a URL for that yet, or?
Yeah, Dartmouth dot schools.
Dot school.
Dot school.
Dot, dot school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
It'll be on the.
So, we should tell everyone it's up, but it is still a work in progress. So, if you, if you don't see things, don't panic, you know.
Or if something's outdated.
Right, provide, you can provide feedback, but it will, it's not quite fully working yet.
Right.
Ms. Amaral?
Yeah, great. I'd just like to echo John, like, my goodness, there's so much in there. I'm really excited about all the work that's been done with the Highlander Institute and that, you know, that personalized learning where the, you're getting all the students and dependent upon, you know, their ability level, that really, the equity in having them access that technology, the innovation is so vital for learning. So, that's fantastic.
And the high school has, you know, receiving some professional development along that. And the middle school has three cohorts of teachers that are working with the group and they're doing some lesson studies together, observing each other. So, it's, it's good work.
Wonderful.
My, my thoughts were too, regarding the Highland Institute and blended and personalized learning. You know, we throw those terms out, but I don't know if the community has any idea what we're talking about. So, I'm, would like to suggest at some point
Sure.
we have a presentation as to what this is all about.
Yeah, it's really good.
I thought personalized learning was individualized instruction, but I read up in it, a lot more than that.
Yeah, it'd be good. It might be nice if we could get maybe some of the teachers that are already involved in the professional, to come and kind of talk about what they're doing differently.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I think, I think. Mr. Oliver?
So, from what I had reviewed on the slides over the weekend, I'll echo my colleagues, a lot of great things happening. You know, I think we are, the district is moving forward. It absolutely is moving forward. A lot of changes, a lot of good things happening. So, I look forward to next update.
Okay, good. Yep, I mean, I want to reiterate how much I think we all appreciate the hard work that went into not just building this, but also our teachers and staff in the buildings who are doing the work and holding the meetings and having the conversations. I think times, sometimes people think teachers just show up and they teach and then they go home at three o'clock, but you know, or maybe even earlier, but there's a lot of, a lot of hard work that goes into bringing this all together. And we really do appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, next on the agenda is the report of the chair. I don't really have anything to report, maybe just a few things. One, I know we already had a working session where we discussed the building project, but the last two years, I believe, we sort of did a working session where we talked about the agenda for the year. And I'm wondering if you all would like to try to schedule something like that. I think that's been pretty good in the past, right, where we, so, and we can, rather than just, oh, let's do blended and personalized learning, the website, maybe we can identify a path.
I think that'd be great.
People can plan for it.
Brain, brainstorm.
Yeah, so maybe we can see, do we want to just maybe try to do before one of our other meetings, rather than having a whole other meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I think that might.
That's worked well.
Great idea.
Yeah, I think that might make sense. So, maybe setting aside like 45 minutes beforehand? Would that work for everyone?
Yeah, sure.
When is our next meeting?
Oh, there it is, 20th?
Yeah.
20th.
Twenty.
November 20th.
November 20th.
So, could people make on November 20th, could we just start a little bit earlier on that one?
Mm-hmm.
We'll do, we'll do a working session, maybe we'll say everyone can be here at 5:30. And then we'll do the working session and then we'll, and maybe we can see if we can, the working session, I think, works when we have a table, which we normally do, but that means we'd have to do the working session in a different room, if we're gonna have a regular.
Yeah, I think we did it in the library.
We've done it in the library before, yeah.
Why don't we do the library beforehand for that and then, and then this one? Madison, you, you are welcome to come if there are topics that you'd like to hear, but you also don't have to come until the actual full school committee meeting, if you'd like, because I know you're very busy and have a lot on your plate. All right, so, the only other thing that I would just add is to say that the spelling bee is on Thursday. It's too late to field a team. I know you're all dying, some of you guys are probably but, but anyone is welcome to come, attend and to cheer on all of our spellers that will be here. And it'll be a fun evening that's over at the high school. The teams are supposed to be there at 6:00. The spelling doesn't start till 7:00. I know, we put on the webpage last year 6:00 o'clock and everyone showed up at 6:00 and then they sat around for an hour. So, the spelling starts at 7:00, just to be clear about that. So, does anyone else have any other matters they'd like to discuss or add?
Okay.
All right, and we've already established that our next meeting is on the 20th.
Yep.
So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Karafotis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one is opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Enjoy trick-or-treating.